Council meeting in Florida, if you can't for a couple of weeks.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that's good. You would want to do the roll call? Baker?
Mayor.
Coon?
Here.
Dryden?
Here.
Heinz? Mitchell?
Here.
Sassy?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Ambulance? Finance?
Here.
Police?
Here.
Public Works?
Here.
All right, well, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2025 regular council meeting? Okay, Jason and Insec are seven. All in favor of approving the minutes of the October 7th, 2025 regular council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item is old business, and that is the street committee report. Councilman Heinz isn't here, so I can read the report. The street committee met on 10/14/25. The meeting opened at 1:00 P.M. In attendance were Rec, Coon, Joanne Heinz, Jason Sassy, Mayor Dian, John Center, Frank Seem, Mary Alice York, the Judith River Dinosaur Institute. That was Nate Murphy and his wife. The agenda items were number one, the MDT and the Merrill Avenue Resolution. This is a resolution that addresses issues the city has had with the Merrill Avenue Project and the lack of completion and follow-through by MDT. So, the committee recommended approval of that resolution. Number two, reminder that the 200 block of Merrill Avenue will be closed on October 18th for the Culver Insurance Celebration from 4:30 to 6:30 P.M. That was just an FYI. And number three was the No Kings Protest scheduled for October 18th on the 300 block of Merrill. I've been in contact with them to remind them that they cannot lock doors past sidewalks or block the parking for first responders. That was just a FYI. There was no public comment, and the meeting adjourned at 1:07 P.M. Did anybody have any discussion about that? Okay, then the next thing was the Pooper Committee, and that report is from Mr. Coon.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We convened at 1:08 P.M., and the same people were present. Item number one, compactor bids, Public Works Director CNN. Print presented the sole two bids for landfill compactor along with the publicly noted bid specs. The two bids are as follows. I remember bid one was Best Equipment Inc. for a rebuilt 2009 CAT. Bid number two was Torgerson's Equipment, and that was for a new bone egg. The CAT was $854,010 and $10. The bone egg was for $948,714. Both bids met specs, and after comparisons, Director CNN presented his recommendations, and the Pooper Committee agreed that in the full bid spec should be in the packet. I guess I didn't look, but anyway, committee recommends approval and acceptance of the Best Equipment Inc. rebuilt 2009 CAT 836H for $854,010. Item number two, water and sewer improvements, change order six. Public Works Director presented the final financial figures of change order six for the Glendive Water and Sewer Improvement on Douglas Street. The council and committee previously approved change order six, but we didn't have the final precise numbers, which are $300,520. Item number three, IT contract director of operations, Senator brought forward a recommendation to accept proposal for City Hall and law enforcement IT services. We'd received two bids for IT services. One was Systems Technology Consultants, which is Morrison, Merrily Systems. And the second proposal was from K-12 Montana. Both proposals were very well put together and took quite some time to compare. Each had the pros and cons, but it came down to Systems Tech had more experience in supporting law enforcement, such as body cams, cruiser laptops, et cetera. Systems Tech was a bit more expensive, however, with our last budget process, we did budget enough money for the services. And Mr. Center has those, and actually, I think in the packet is that. Systems Tech proposal. So, the committee approves acceptance of Systems Technology Consultants, Morrison, Merrily Systems. Item number four, budget transfer policy change. Director Center and Mayor Dian brought forward an updated resolution to raise the level of needing full council approval for budget transfers by one budgetary level. This replaces Resolution 3119 that was put in place in 2022 due to overspending without council approval or budget authority. Resolution 3119 required full council approval for any and all transfers. The new Resolution 3196 will still have control over spending, however, gives the department heads a little more freedom on a limited scale for the more day-to-day items. So, the Pooper Committee approved Resolution 3196. Item number five, ambulance EMT class. The ambulance EMT class, the Director Deener is putting on right now, has seventeen participants. I think she gave an update today at the LEPC meeting, said she has fifteen, but...
Yeah, I think they lost a couple.
Yep, so anyway, this is exciting, and will hopefully ease the shortage of EMTs that we have been dealing with. And lastly was item number six, the Judith River Dinosaur Institute proposal. Nate Murphy, the Director of the JRDI, gave the committee a proposal/business plan for paleontology revenue to the city of Glendive. Mr. Murphy has long history, proven model of hosting dino digs in various locations. Currently, and as far as long as I've known, the Museum of the Rockies digs on the city of Glendive property and takes fossil along with all proceeds from the fossils for themselves. So, Mr. Murphy is proposing that we do two digs per summer, a week-long each. Each person pays $2,000 per the week-long dig, twenty-five person max per group. So, that would be fifty total people for the two weeks, which would be possibly up to $100,000 in revenue. But Mr. Murphy would provide the hosting service for two to three years and train city personnel. So, with that, he would keep the per-person fee for those two to three years, but the city could potentially keep any proceeds from fossils found. So, then after the two to three years, the city would keep all. He would turn it all over to the city, and the city would keep all of the per-person fees. So, the main concerns were, do the Museum of the Rockies have rights to city property and any fossils found? Mayor will check into legal questions about Museum of the Rockies, and then does the city want to be in the paleontology business? The good news was that it was going to be a two- to three-year transition, and the city would be able to see if there's something that we can sustain or want to do. But depending on checking into legal, and the committee at that time had recommended moving forward. But there was no public comment, and we adjourned at 2:21 P.M.
All right, thank you. We'll discuss more about that Judith River thing in the new business. No one signed up for public comment, but does anyone have public comment? No, all right. Then the next item on new business is to read a proclamation welcoming Culver Insurance and Investments back to downtown Glendive. This is a proclamation of the city of Glendive to recognize and welcome Culver Insurance and Investments back to downtown Glendive. Whereas the city of Glendive wishes to congratulate everyone at Culver Insurance and Financial Advisors on the joyous occasion of reopening their business following a devastating disaster over two years ago that destroyed their building. We sincerely thank them for their investment in our community and for a long-term dedication to the city. And whereas this business journey began forty-seven years ago when Jim Culver started the agency, not only has this organization been part of our community for nearly fifty years, but we have all benefited from the many contributions of this family. The Culvers see Glendive as a wonderful community with much to offer and have carried this vision forward. Their business has grown, expanded, and continues through the generations. They are excellent examples of what positive local people with a dedication to the community can do. And whereas this family teaches us resilience, commitment, perseverance, and enthusiasm. The new building is an example of how a disaster can become a shining model of doing the right thing in a small town. The building is more beautiful than many of us could imagine. It is a lovely addition to our downtown and a true vision of the future of Glendive. And whereas this recognition is not just about a new building, it is also about a family's commitment to each other and to be a positive part of their community. We thank them for their community service and willingness to help others. We know they do many things behind the scenes, and they do not seek attention or reward. And whereas because of their service, we want to take this moment to thank the Culver family, to congratulate them on this milestone, and to wish them only success in the future. Glendive is a much better place because they are here. We appreciate them and are so grateful that they remain a cornerstone of our community. Congratulations to you all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Deb Dian, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Glendive, do hereby recognize and congratulate Culver Insurance on their new building and their return to downtown on October 18th, 2025. And I think we should give him a hand because he's here. And, and Melanie.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you're very welcome, thank you. All right, and next, we are going to nominate an elected city council president, so I'm going to give you your secret ballots here. When we did this before, all this passed these, and you could take one. We open it up, and we walk, so can I get a motion to... Yes?
Can you have a motion to nominate?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to nominate Councilman Rec Coon for the office of Council President. No second?
Okay, so we've got Rec nominated by Mike Insec, by Clyde. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Mike Dryden.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
I think I can decline.
Okay, I'm Red, second to.
I think I can decline.
Nope.
I don't believe it. We even at least have an option, right? Okay, any other nominations?
Make a motion nomination season.
Okay. Can I get a second for that?
Yeah.
All right. All right, now if you would please vote for either of the candidates.
To.
And nominations. My speech was in favor of Red, by the way, that's why.
Okay, here they are. All right, so we have... That is written small. All right, so we have one vote for Rec Coon, two votes for Rec Coon, three votes for Rec Coon, four votes for Rec Coon, and two votes for Mr. Dryden, so...
Oh, thank you.
So, Mr. Coon, you are the new council president, so congratulations. Feel better if I get sick, that someone could take over, so...
But that won't happen, you're done being sick.
Should we let the smoke out the top of the building now, or are we waiting?
This isn't the conclave, just keep saying, it's a blessing, it's a blessing.
Is it vote? Yeah. All right, and I guess we can move to the next item. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution for the Montana Department of Transportation, Merrill Avenue Project? Okay, that's Kevin and Clyde. Of course, it's a resolution, so it has to have a roll call vote, but first, is there any discussion about it? It's in your packet. Mostly concerning some of the things that didn't get finished with the Main Street project, and it's a way to move it forward.
Mayor, with the passage of the resolution, then we directly contact the Director of the Montana Department of Transportation about...
Well, if you read it, it says that the clerk will send basically a registered letter to them, and I'll just read a little history, and it says that we're recommending we address the Merrill Avenue Projects with a council resolution rather than just a letter because a resolution is the city's official voted action. It puts the full authority of the governing body behind our position, creates a permanent recorded directive with clear findings and deadlines, and formally authorizes steps like technical meetings, demand notice, or claim escalation. So, staff and the attorney have unambiguous marching orders. A letter is only correspondence or resolution documents that the council has deliberated, set expectations, and spoken with one voice, strengthening our posture with MDT now and if we need to escalate later. So, transmitting an adopted resolution shows a unified, accountable, and enforceable city action.
So, Mayor, then the action later, I don't want to get into all the things, I'm just... My point is, then this goes to the head of MDOT, not like the governor or the Attorney General, per se.
Right, right, to the DOT. Yes, Jason.
Just for anybody that doesn't know, there's multiple issues with the Main Street project. There was streetlights, to say the least, it's dark right here, there's manholes, there's bricks in the sewer, there's flooding that we had to cover the cost.
Yeah, the bricks are out of the sewer, but I mean, a lot of it's been remedied, what we could on our part, and for the sheer fact of, I can't have plugged sewers, I mean, I gotta call out on a Saturday. So, there's all of the money we spent on that project to fix the problems that were caused by MDT, and the streetlights aren't fixed, I've got manhole paved over the storm drains, the list goes on, and it seemed to have, it's fallen on deaf ears with me, I've tried, I'm not getting responses now. I was at League of Cities, and I kicked the... I got a meeting tomorrow with MDT on site, and MBU, so...
Good.
Well, yeah.
But I think you're on the right...
But this is the direction, I think we need to go and get moving forward, and I consulted John on it before we got to this point, and like, this is the kind of the direction I want to go, and yeah, there's really, we need to do something, it's been over a year, so it's time to get some action.
It makes it formal, so...
And that's the intent. And so, yeah, the letter will go to local MDT, and my intention is to send it to Chris Darnington as well.
And he's the head of DOT.
Yeah, okay. He's the Director for...
Any other discussion? All right, we can call for the roll call vote. Baker?
Yes.
Coon?
Aye.
Dryden?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Thompson?
All right.
Motion passes? The next item is to get a reso or a motion. Could I... I want a motion. Could I get a motion to discuss the options of the fossil resources and the Judith River Institute? Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Kevin, and then second.
Just to discuss it, so...
Yeah, we're just discussing, and then I need a second. Or maybe we don't all have a clause. Okay, it looks like Red raised his hand there. Red?
Clyde did.
And Clyde did, too, but he was after Red. So, I'll just first tell you that I got quite a few calls from different people advising me to look into the background of Nate Murphy. And of course, anybody can Google it and see that he has been in some trouble with digging up fossils in areas where he wasn't supposed to be. Now, of course, he says there's two sides to every story, and he did tell me that he had no intent of doing anything wrong, he thought he was on private land, he was on BLM land, he extracted a fossil, and he was charged in federal court, and he did plead guilty. And there are some other instances. I did get a call from the Malta Museum, which was somebody that he kind of referenced in his presentation, and they've had problems as well. And so, I did talk to Shannon Bice yesterday from Bice's Dinosaur Diggs, and she does think this is a great idea, that we look at this fossil resource at the landfill, because every time it rains, you know, you lose some material, and she did tell me that right now, this fossils are selling for the highest price that they've ever been at. So, I do think that, I should thank Mr. Murphy for bringing this idea forward, but I guess from my experience and from what I've heard and the emails that I've read, I think maybe it's a good project, but we have the wrong partner. So, I don't know if any of you guys heard from people, or if you did any of your own Googling, but I would just say that we need to look at it further and try to find somebody else that might be interested in partnering with us. And I guess what I'm looking at is, I don't see any of us on the council here wanting to step forward and learn how to prepare or extract dinosaur bones. So, I don't really know that this is something that the city wants to get involved in, but I would like to see the city financially benefit from the fossils that are removed from the landfill. I'm not saying that I want to sell all the fossils in Glendive or anything like that, but the landfill site is not the ideal place to, you know, preserve your fossil resources. So, I do think that that's a good idea, that we start looking at that, but that's my opinion, and I'm sure open to whatever anybody else has to say. Yes, Mike?
No, yeah, Mayor, I don't have any disagreement with anything that was said there, and I didn't hear Mr. Murphy, and I'll just leave that part alone, but the, I just have some questions. So, right now, what we've had in the past, actually for quite a few years, is Museum of the Rockies comes here now. Number one, do they go on the same area that we're talking about, the landfill property? Are they on another property? And they, of course, charge their students tuition for the classes.
I don't really know those details. I do know that I did talk to the museum.
We get no compensation from anything, and they keep the fossils, is what I understand. Okay, go ahead.
So, they usually take them back to the Museum of the Rockies, and they use them for educational or scientific stuff, and I don't know, but I've been told that they do sometimes sell fossils, I don't know if they're selling the ones they get here. So, I asked them if they were excavating anything at the landfill right now, they have found a dome-headed dinosaur, but he, the Museum of the Rockies guy, John Scannella, said that that is actually on Makoshka Park property, but they crossed the landfill because it's like a shortcut to get to where that is. That frill that we have in the cast of it in the hallway, that was discovered at the landfill, is my understanding, that's a juvenile triceratops, very rare. So, some of these are very, very valuable bones and fossils. So, right now, we do not have a contract with Museum of the Rockies, they just, they ask for permission every year, and we've always granted it. Now, they do not want to be involved at the landfill if someone else is at the landfill. And when I talked to Mr. Murphy, he did not want to be involved if somebody else was going to be there either. So, I think this dome-headed dinosaur, I don't know when they plan to actually extract that or whatever they do, but if we're going to go with something like this with a partner to dig up these fossils, then I guess we would have to ask them to expedite that just so that they're not getting in each other's way. But I don't know how long this will take to find a new partner, or if it is something that we'll want to move forward with, but it is a resource, and we do lose some bits of stuff when we get a heavy rain, and I'm told that it washes down into the Glendive Creek and becomes gravel, and then it's lost its value. The guy at Malta, I was telling him, well, we might not find big things, and he said that he had a pill bottle that had different bone fragments and different bits of fossil, and he was told that those items in the pill bottle now are valued at between $1,200 and $1,500. So, it doesn't have to be a big find, but if you have a lot of small finds, they add up. The dinosaur that Nate extracted and got in trouble about, they said the value of that was $330,000. That was in 2009. I was told that that fossil now would be worth about $1 million if it was sold now. So, I don't know how much stuff we have there or what the resource is, but I do think that it's, it might be a good time, because the price is so high, to think about that resource at the landfill and to not let any more of it be degraded over time, because, you know, landfills aren't the best place to store your fossil resources if you're thinking long-term. Yes?
But at the same time, Mayor, the, no one has a right to go on city property and take a fossil and commercialize it for their own benefit without the city's approval.
Right, right.
So, anything that would happen at this point, if somebody finding, taking fossils off city property for their own profit...
It's a crime, it's a crime. Yeah, it's a crime, you can be prosecuted for it. He was the first guy to get prosecuted in federal court for a fossil, so it's real. Any other discussion about that? Well, just, I'm gonna try to talk to Dave DeCoyle later this week, and he said that he wanted to meet with me, so I'm thinking he's got some information, and this is kind of his passion, he's a local guy, so I would like to talk to him and see what his perspective is, but I haven't yet.
I just have one question for Frank. How close is these dig sites to where you're at?
Way behind us.
Okay. So, it wouldn't really, doesn't bother you the idea?
It doesn't affect any operation at this point.
Okay.
At this point. That can change, but that's, you know, that's not in the foreseeable future. If anybody here is dealing with it, it's because they were re-elected.
Yes, Mayor, excuse me.
Just, so you were talking to, I don't know, the curator at the Malta Museum, which which is in Montana, has a reputation for fossils and such. Do they pay to obtain fossils? Do museums?
Museums feel by fossils. Now, one of the stories that I was told, which I relate to some of you guys, is that Mr. Murphy found a fossil in Utah. And it was a fairly valuable fossil, and so he had a collector that was interested in it. So, the collector bought the fossil for $5 million. Then, the collector sold the fossil on Sutherby's for $55 million. So, the landowner is angry about that. But, you know, you might think, oh, $5 million is a lot to spend for a fossil. But right now, there's a, Saudi Arabia is paying top dollar for these fossils, because they're, they have a very expensive and elaborate dinosaur fossil museum there. So, there are very wealthy people. Somebody told me about that they sold a triceratops. Oh, it was Mrs. Bice, sold a triceratops for a lot of money. It was just a very wealthy guy, whose grandson is interested in dinosaurs, so he bought him one. You know, so there are people who have a lot of money, and right now, the price is high. So, I don't want Glendad to miss the boat, I guess. But I just don't think that right now that this is gonna work. At least what was presented to us, I think. And maybe it would if the guy was monitored, or I don't know. But I just know that right now, we really can't make a decision, because we don't have enough information. So, any?
Do we need to do anything with the motion?
No, because it's just to discuss options. So, I think as long as we did that, we can move on to the next item, if nobody else has any questions. All right, then next item is to get a motion to approve the compactor bid for the cap. Could I get a motion for that? Okay, Rhett, in a second. Okay, Kevin. Any discussion about this before we vote on it? I guess we talked about it at Cooper.
You are flying down there to put eyes on it, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Cool. Yeah, when, when do we fly out? So, you're the president?
Where's Jerry?
All right. Okay, so, all in favor of approving the compactor bid for a cap, say aye.
Aye.
The next item is to get a motion to approve change order number six. Can I get a motion for that? Clyde, in a second, from Mike. All right, so really, we've already approved this change order. The only thing different on here is now we have the amount. So.
Before you vote, the amount on that is $530,720.
What was that amount?
$530,720.
Yeah, I think so, I think so, yeah. All right, any discussion about that?
It's on there.
Yeah, $530,720.
Yeah, I didn't know if we, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
The other one is the, includes the concrete removal. That way, it's done now, the road crew, yeah, right? So.
Yeah.
Any other discussion about the change order? All right, all in favor of approving change order number six, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item is to approve the cloud backup and IT company. Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Kevin, in a second. Okay, Rhett. All right, any, we have any discussion about this? As Rhett said in his report, the reason that we chose Systems Technology is because of their experience with the body cams and the police department laptops and the equipment that they have in the cruisers. The other bid was a little bit less, but they really don't have experience with that. And I feel that we need to continue with a company that knows what our equipment is and knows how to maintain it, so. Any discussion about that?
Just one question for John. You're still, this is your best choice here?
Yes, among the two.
Kind of a one-stop shop?
Yes.
Covers everything?
Our budget, we budgeted more than adequately for it. And as Rhett mentioned, or it's highlighted in here, we can actually cancel the agreement after 30 days, or certainly after a year, for whatever reason. But I think that's the best step. The police and dispatch folks are really, really happy with the service they get. And just having that all under one umbrella, I think, makes sense for the city.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Did you have some questions?
Oh, just one, yes, again. We're kind of addressing this, so we, you were saying they can counsel after 30 days. You don't just have 30 days. And then, this won't come up again then, until one of the parties wants to renegotiate or change it? So, in other words, if we're happy, we never, in a sense, vote on this again. It's not like in two years, we need to renew this for a year. There's no definitive time period like that yet.
What do you think, Rhett? I don't see in here that there's an end date.
No, so I think it, and John can chime in, too, but I think it was, this is an annual contract, but either party can cancel out with 30 days' notice at any time. But I don't think we'd ever have to go out to bid or do this again, unless we wanted to look at other options or other, if we were dissatisfied with them, then we could go out to bid again. But otherwise, we could continue the contract next year and the year after and stuff, too. The other thing that I will also say is, this contract is pretty robust. So, we've got a lot of time factored in there for people with questions or that have issues with their computer. We kind of went for the high level of attention, so if, but we also know that, you know, next year, we're gonna have to start replacing computers and stuff. So, maybe this contract stays the same for two years. But after that, if everybody feels confident, we don't have to call tech support as much. We could reduce that contract and go to a lower level and not have as much cost.
Right, yeah, yeah. Relatively speaking. With inflation and all that stuff.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Am I correct on my assessment there, John?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion about it? All right, then. All in, let's see, this is a contract, but I don't have that real. So, all in favor of approving a backup in the IT company of Systems Technology consultants, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item is to approve the Budget Transfer Changes Resolution Number 3196. Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Mike, in a second, from Jason. All right, any discussion about this resolution? All right, then we can go right to the roll call vote. Baker?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Dred?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
The next item is to approve the changes to the times of the committee meetings. So, could I get a motion for that? Okay, Doug, in a second. Kevin? All right, so, we have two council members who have stepped up when they were called to duty to be school bus drivers. So, they are not back at the bus barn in time to come to four o'clock meetings. So, on the agenda, I put for the personnel and ordinance meetings to be at 5:00 and 5:15. And I'd like to start with that, moving those meetings to 5:00 and 5:15. And then, if it just keeps us till too late, maybe we can move to lunch meetings or earlier meetings. I realize Clyde also does trees and people have jobs, so. And I don't know if making them earlier in the day makes it more difficult for people to come, but we don't usually have a lot of people even at the four o'clock meeting. So, I'm just, for now, at least, I'd like to have the meetings at 5:00 and 5:15, if everybody's okay with that. Or if you have another idea, I'm wide open. Okay, well, thank you guys for being bus drivers anyway, so. Yes.
Yeah, you mentioned personnel and ordinance. I assume this applies to street and food.
Well, I think it would have to, because Jason's on that, and he could get called.
He didn't mention, so I'll just.
Right.
Alchemies.
Right, but this is just the one coming up right now, so. So, then.
On the days I have committee, you could drag shoulders down.
Yeah, you could drag shoulders down. So, all in favor of changing the terms of committee meetings to 5:00 and 5:15, say aye?
Aye.
Now, I think on the next agenda, we're not gonna actually put the amount of the claims, because almost every time, something happens on Monday, and you gotta change it. So, I need a motion to approve the accounts payable claims for fiscal year 2026 So, that number is different than what the agenda said. So, it's, and it matches what you just signed on the bills. So, that is $303,858.25. Can I get a motion to approve that? Okay, we've got Doug and Clyde. All in favor of approving the accounts payable claims of, for fiscal year 2026, of $303,858.25, say aye?
Aye.
Next is to get a motion to approve the accounts payable claims for fiscal year 25 Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Jason, in a second. Okay, we've got several, but I'll save Doug. All in favor of approving the accounts payable claims for fiscal year 25 of $4,563.77, say aye?
Aye.
Next are the department head comments. So, I will just start with you, Mr. Center.
Thank you, Mayor. We submitted our final budget document to the state ahead of the October 1st deadline, so that is now officially done. And now that our budget is set, I had hoped to have a budget report for you tonight in the packet. It is not in there. Jessica and I are working on trying to come up with a little bit of a different format, a higher-level format for council, that'll really focus on the major funds, just the key pieces of information, instead of having you sift through a 50-page report, which we can still reply, provide to you if you want the details. But something, a one- or two-page report that you can look at and see at a glance how the city is doing on a quarterly basis. So, we'll present something to you at the first meeting in November and see how you like that. If there's things you like, don't like, wanna see, we can always adjust it after there. Also, it's audit time already. We just got our audit report for last year. Now, we're already starting the process for this year. So, that's happening in conjunction of completing our annual financial report, which is due on December 31st. So, we are working on, we're gonna start providing documents and information to the auditor for the year ended this past June, and start putting the annual financial report together. And that will keep us busy for the rest of the year, certainly. But I think that's all I had, unless anyone has questions.
Oh, just one question, John. So, do we still have the same auditing firm? We had a three-year agreement with them, but we must be getting close to the end of that.
We do. Their agreement ended with this past audit. We went out and requested a bid from them and from Olness, who was our previous auditor. Nexus, which we used, used to be Downing Denny, came in quite a bit lower. And I just felt that having that continuity there with them over the past few years, where nobody was in my position, this is my first full year on the job, that it would be good to stay with them, so I think from all angles. So, we'll be going with Downing Denny slash Nexus for the next three years.
So, I'm just kind of surprised, because it seemed like they were kind of unhappy with us, not you specifically, but they were not happy with the city for some reason or another.
I think you hit on the key part, not him.
Yeah.
And that person we hired.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, the gentleman I worked with this past year was great, so. And he'll, he's kind of the new managing partner of the firm now. So. So.
They're good guys.
I, I think so.
Back in the good. Thank you.
All right, what about you, Mr. Sean?
Your report is in your packet, not in your packet.
Anybody have any questions about that?
But we are starting with the approval of change order six. We'll be starting construction. We had pre-con this morning. And we'll be starting the sewer first. We're starting with some concrete cutting. We'll start tomorrow, and then sewer project, extra bit will be on the ground on Monday after the sewer. Start with the storm, little site restoration. And hopefully by mid-November, BEK is out of town. And hopefully by Thanksgiving, end of the month, we have plans set and we're out to bid for the remainder of the project, which would be the resurfacing. But it's all written up in my report there, so.
This is the Douglas and Bell Street project by the gust off there. All right, any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Dred.
Yeah, that, Roger, did that include, it seems like a little transformation there, the street that, where there's a stop sign.
Bell Street?
Parallel to the, it could be Bell Street.
That's Bell Street, but.
So, is that street gonna be?
Not, not in the service plans at this moment, no.
It's not what?
No, we don't have those plans finalized yet either, but no, none as of right now.
We're not planning too good.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Sean? Nope. All right, how about you, Captain Jonas? Do you have anything?
We've been kind of busy for call-wise. We've had some of the health upticks lately. We attended the No Kings protest this last weekend. It went pretty well, not a lot of complaints. We had two truck stops from truck drivers burning out in front of them. They responded very well when we talked to them, and they understood they had better ways of protesting back, so. Had a lot of calls this morning from people that attended both sides of the event, and they were pleased. A lot of people were protesting both sides very professionally this time. So, tons of trucks or flags that were driving appropriately down the street this time, so. Our Dodge Durango, that's been sitting in a shop for like seven months, finally called Mopar directly, called their customer service, and that seemed to get some kind of result, because the part finally got delivered this week, so it should be back in service next week. So, just called the people that run the shop, and it seems to work better. Absurd, that, that's all I got.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sean? Any questions for Mr. Jonas? All right, um, did you have anything, Mr. Rubus?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There's a shop here.
All right, then, you note that, uh, Mr. Center said that the first quarter report will be in November. That's on the agenda here, but it isn't in your packet. The city court report is in your packet, the police commission report. Mr. Senior, do you want to speak about the cash reconciliation or the JV thing?
No, it's just in there as an FYI if you have questions. It's just to let you know we're balancing cash on a monthly basis. When we do all of our year-end adjusting entries, I think by law, the council is required to sign off on those. So when those are done, probably one of the meetings in December, I'll present those to the council specifically.
Okay, and then the only other announcement that I have is that we will have a special city council meeting on October twenty-ninth at five PM. This will be to nominate, elect, and swear in our new, a new council member. The personnel committee will meet on October twenty-seventh at five PM. The ordinance committee will meet on October twenty-seventh at five fifteen PM. Yeah, that's right. And I don't have any mayor comments at this time, so we could move for a journey.
I do have a question.
Okay.
The, uh, John, on your report about the council approving the cash before the end of the year, why does the calendar year mention when we're on fiscal year?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, you were saying we have to, you were talking about December back.
Oh, well, those are year-end journal entries. They're actually for the year ended in June, but they'll be part of the financial report that is due on December thirty-first.
Okay.
So as we work toward completion of that, that's when I'll present them to you, but they're effective June thirtieth.
Okay.
Yeah, for the fiscal year, yeah.
Yeah, and then the second thing, Mayor, I'm always forgetting the second thing, but, yeah. I can't remember what the second thing was. Okay. Oh, well, I just know, with the committee, do they need anybody to show up on the committee for, for the South on the twenty-first or twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
Are these three people gonna be there? I don't mean to stick my nose in, but if they need somebody, I just soon know now is not.
Well, I think with moving it to five and five fifteen, now Clyde will be able to attend and Doug. And I think Kevin will be there, so I think as long as we have those three. But if somebody notifies me that you can't come to a meeting, then I can always try to get another council person to fill in. So just let me know. All right, any other discussion? All right, then let's move for a journey. And Clyde, in a second.